You can hear us, Sheila?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, indeed. Okay, the time is now 7:03 PM and I will call this meeting to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Reichel, Pro Tem Hanrahan?
Here.
Trustee Bretton?
Here.
Trustee Klassen?
Here.
Trustee Inglehart?
Here.
Trustee Poston?
Here.
Trustee Seifert?
Here.
All right, may we now rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The first item on our agenda this evening is public comments. Persons desiring to make public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raise function, raised hand function in the meeting program. Sheila, do we have any phone calls or messages?
No, I did not hear from anyone today.
Amy, do we have any raised hands in the meeting program?
We do not, we only have staff on the Zoom meeting so far.
And no one signed in this evening, Jim?
Correct.
Then the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the October 15, 2024 Board of Trustees Meeting. Resolution number 35, Series 2024, a resolution supporting the grant approval for a Garfield County Federal Mineral Lease District grant in the amount of $25,000 for a total project cost of $35,000 in order to offset the costs associated with the purchasing of a new administration vehicle within the town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. And another resolution, Resolution Number 36, Series 2024, a resolution supporting the grant approval for a Garfield County Federal Mineral Lease District grant in the amount of $500,000 for a total project cost of $1,172,759 in order to offset the costs associated with the Grand Avenue replacement project within the town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. Do we have any questions or want to discuss it?
Number two, the vehicle, is that strictly for town hall? Or is that yours or is that just for town hall?
It's just an administrative vehicle. Yeah, I mean, really, it's another vehicle that when we hire a building inspector, we'll have an additional vehicle around to be used.
Okay.
So it's not a replacement for any existing that's aged out?
No, we were trying to get Nicole to give up her Explorer, but she's not willing to.
I was gonna ask about that.
Because she, she doesn't want anything nice.
Okay. Maybe she'll change her mind when it snows.
I think it's fine in the snow.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Taking it.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Seifert and seconded by trustee Bretton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any members of the board have any conflicts of interest this evening with any subjects?
No, sir.
None here.
Any agenda changes from staff?
No, sir.
Any agenda changes from the board?
None here.
Then the next item on the agenda is the Garfield Clean Energy 2025 Budget Funding Request. And I will turn this over to manager man.
We have representative from Garfield Clean Energy and I'm gonna turn it over to them. So they can-
If they'd like to come up and have a seat, please.
And we sent a presentation as well, a PowerPoint in the email, but we also have the ability to connect to-
We've got you.
Okay, go, there it is, awesome, thank you. All right, well, thank you so much for having us this evening. My name's Morgan Hill, I'm the Associate Director at CLEAR, Clean Energy Economy for the Region, and also the, the project lead or point person for the Garfield Clean Energy Collaborative.
And I'm Christina Mattel, I am the Energy and Data Analyst for CLEAR and do all of that for GCE.
All right, next slide. So Garfield Clean Energy, and actually I'll kind of jump to the, that bottom bullet point there. Why you're hearing from us as employees of CLEAR, but we're presenting on Garfield Clean Energy is that GCE contracts with CLEAR to operate their programs and services. So when you, you hear from us as staff and actually the members of the public often get CLEAR and GCE confused sometimes in terminology and sometimes that's okay because we just want people to access our, our services and get to the website and take advantage of all our programs. So Garfield Clean Energy is comprised of nine member governments and this includes all the municipalities in Garfield County as well as the county itself. And holy, or excuse me, also Colorado Mountain College and the Ring Fork Transportation Authority, RFTA, are also members. And you'll notice that those are all governments, this is a government collaborative. And so with this structure, we're able to apply for federal grants and other things that a government collaborative is eligible for. And also that our members are formalized through an intergovernmental agreement. We also have Holy Cross Energy and then the Garfield County Library District just rejoined as an affiliate member this year as well. So we're excited to have them back on board. And GCE was established first as an advisory board in 2009 and then incorporated as a government collaborative in 2012. So we've got quite a bit of history in the community in doing this work. And excuse me, I'm seeing that this says Town of Newcastle, Town of Silt, was a founding GCE partner as well. So the vision of GCE is that we will be an innovative leader and these are really our pillars of our programs is energy efficiency in buildings and renewable energy and clean transportation or clean mobility to protect the environment and build a strong, resilient, and diverse economy. So you'll hear us talk about economic diversification and the economic benefits that our programs bring throughout this presentation and that's a really important component of the work that we do. And this photo is a picture of some current GCE board members, some previous board members and CLEAR staff at a solar array that they toured up at Spring Valley, on the Spring Valley campus of CMC. So really, our, one of our most foundational programs and areas that we focus on is our residential and commercial energy coaching programs. And all Garfield County residents, businesses, and commercial property owners can receive free energy coaching through GCE. And really what we focus on in this work is the biggest bang for the buck, energy savings measures. So sometimes that's not as glamorous as solar panels on the roof or things like that that people notice. But attic and basement insulation can make a huge difference with energy efficiency. We also provide information on available rebates and other financing options. We don't actually have, we'll talk about our commercial energy coaching program. We don't actually have rebates typically for commercial programs. We provide this coaching service. We can recommend appliances that are energy efficient and then we also provide contractor lists. And wanted to highlight that the, the picture on the bottom left is of the Wapiti Commons and Rifle and we provided energy coaching on that project. New construction is an opportunity to make a big difference in making buildings more efficient before or as they're being built. So for the Re-Energize Garfield County Program, this is, again, one of our, when the board gets together for their annual retreat, they talk about how much they love Re-Energize and the value that it provides to community members. This is an income-qualified residential energy efficiency program that is, is fully funded by GCE. So some of these other programs are funded by utilities, funded by the state or federal government. And this is GCE partner funded, although we are always looking for grants to try to grow the budget as well. And it goes up to 100, 150% area median income. So the CARE and WAP, which are state and federal programs, only go up to 80% AMI. And we just know that in this community that people who make up to 150% area median income aren't, they don't just have a lot of money to spend on energy efficiency upgrades and that they could really benefit from having their energy bills lowered. And we typically provide rebates between $2,000 and $4,000, although we made this coming year modify it to just be a flat $3,000 or $4,000 for everyone. And this work is performed by Northwest COG and they see the process from start to finish. They go to the home, do the audit, figure out what's needed, and then they actually install the energy saving measures. And we talked about some of the projects that are often covered by Re-Energize, but that's insulation, insulation and air sealing. We do pipe and duct wrapping. We also provide heating and cooling system upgrades. Sometimes if that's a heat pump, heat pumps can, are certainly more than $2,000 to $4,000, but we'll help chip in for the cost of that and sometimes the utility will also rebate quite a bit. And we also do rebate lighting. So these are the numbers for Silt this year and in previous years as well. So since we began Re-Energize in its current form in 2022, which is, we've had home energy efficiency programs prior to this time, but Re-Energize was launched in its current form in 2022. And we have allocated $11,000 to Silt residents in 2024. And the formatting got a little messed up on this one, but we estimate that annually we're saving Silt residents $4,600 cumulatively on their energy bills. So that's money that they can use for other expenses that also maybe stays in the local economy. And you can see how much funding has of, from GCE has gone to Re-Energize over the years.
So $230 per household generally, right? If it's at 20?
Yeah.
Annually.
Annually, yeah. And that's kind of an average over the last three years. But some of the homes are saving, you can see a couple examples here. We had a four-mile townhome that had a bunch of upgrades done that also leveraged funding from their utility. And they're saving an estimated annual energy, they're saving $1,625 a year. So that's over $100 a month on their energy bills. They, kind of a sort of cute anecdotal story from that family is that they used to have icicles melting off the roof and the kids really liked that. But then when we installed attic insulation, it made such a difference that there were no more icicles. So I thought that was kind of a good example of just how much energy can be saved and not, and that heat wasn't lost, it was stayed, it remained in the home. We've also done a project where we did duct insulation in a crawl space that resulted in about $800 of annual energy savings. The picture on the top left is a Northwest COG employee who's installing that insulation. And then we also rebated a mini-split heat pump, which, heat pumps are, I think, there's more awareness of what they are and how they work and the benefits that they can provide in terms of efficiency. But, and you know, again, they're not, we're not gonna cover the whole cost with Re-Energize, but this, with rebate, saved about $1,800 for that family. We always want folks to reach out to us to apply for our programs. We, this kind of highlights how popular this program is. We ran out of money this year, but we have a waitlist and we have not turned anyone away so far. Everyone who applies just gets on the waitlist for the next year and then we've been able to, everyone who's qualified, we've been able to get to their home. So we can, we encourage people to reach out to us.
And then I'll jump in on advanced energy management. This is a program we, we provide to all of the GCE partners. This program has been provided in a, a couple different iterations since about 2012. We had a program called the Energy, Building Energy Navigator and it is now the advanced energy management program. The, we have interval data meters on a lot of the buildings throughout all of the partners and that tracks the demand that's being pulled from those buildings every 15 minutes. We also track electricity bills and natural gas bills for all of these just to be able to watch trends and provide information to each of the partners. And then we also do track savings from community solar subscriptions as well. For the town of Silt, we are tracking utility bills for three of the buildings and we're also tracking those same buildings with interval data. The town buildings are recorded in Portfolio Manager for benchmarking. Portfolio Manager is a platform that the state's requiring all buildings greater than 50,000 square feet put their information into and there's nothing quite that big here for Silt yet that needs to be benchmarked, but we have it in that system for when it is time. That system also provides a Energy Star score estimate. And as your buildings are improving in their efficiency, that number starts to creep up and if any of the buildings maintain a score of 75 or greater, they would be eligible to apply for a Energy Star score to be recognized through that program. And then we, through all of this and all of that, the utility bills and everything we are collecting, we try to monitor solar and make sure that all of our partners are being properly compensated from their utilities and that their solar is producing the way it's supposed to.
Let me just jump in. We are working to still try to figure out our solar bills. And we are still running into some headwinds in trying to get the numbers to actually make sense. So we're still working to try to resolve that information for you.
Is it in Latin?
Greek.
With Excel, Excel energy, it might as well be.
If we knew the language, we would have figured it out by now.
Yeah. And, and it's not, and unfortunately, the same issue that Silt is coming up against with that solar is not unheard of. We're seeing it across some of the other partners as well with their solar and not being compensated properly.
The issue is, is that there's a certain amount that our solar array says it's producing. Then there's a certain amount that Excel is giving us credit for and then there's a certain amount that we're paying for. And we have yet to be able to do the math to go from what's being produced, how we're being compensated for it and what our energy bill is. And we keep getting new people to talk to us and it's like they're reading off a script and they're not, we're not getting to the bottom of it. And Deputy Clerk Malsbury and me are working on it and we continue to try to work on it.
We should talk about that offline, I don't want to take up any more of your time.
Yeah, and we're happy to help with all of, all of that, so. And then with this program, like I mentioned, that interval data, we use this information combined with the utility bills to provide quarterly reports and identify opportunities for saving energy and money in the buildings. So for Silt, we're tracking the water and the wastewater treatment plants. And for the most part, those, we're just tracking how they run. There's, they've got to run the way that they need to. So there's not a whole lot of savings that can be seen there, but we're also tracking the town hall. And actually, I was running some numbers for all of the partners for quarter three of the year. And the town hall has reduced energy use this quarter, July 1st through September 30th. This year, from what it was using last year, I forget how much, but it was around 8% a decrease in, in electricity use, which was really good for, compared to other buildings.
Who would you attribute that to?
From the data standpoint, I'm not really sure. Generally, it's, we, so this image shows a profile of a building. It's down at night and then up for business during the day. So when we see significant amount of savings, it generally means that the building is shutting down more at night.
So maybe a, an unintended consequence of 410s.
I was gonna say the 410s may have done it.
That would make sense.
We didn't really factor that in, but it's, it's worthy of note.
Yeah, I'm putting together some of my quarterly reports for, for this last quarter. And so maybe I will look into that and see if that's what's making the difference for you, be able to quantify it.
When did the 410 change go into effect?
April.
April.
April, for our data person.
Yeah. Good, I will look into that. Yeah, so it's, I really enjoy this program, data's my thing, so I am helping out with that.
That's our timer.
Is that, does that mean we're at 15 minutes for, we can keep going?
Yes.
You can keep going, we're ahead of schedule, so.
I thought so, but I just wanted to clarify.
It's just a suggestion.
It's just to help us keep on track.
All right, gotcha. Christina and I usually kind of split this slide, do you want to take this one? Yeah.
So Morgan had mentioned our residential programs and, and coaching and, like she said, we have a commercial program as well. We have a service out there and have, so that commercial businesses can reach out to us for coaching. That, when they reach out, that it can include a walkthrough. We have a building specialist who focuses on commercial buildings and multifamily housing and she's able to come through and, and provide a report to business on what sort of measures they can do to reduce energy and their electric bills for that business. The image here is one of the businesses she helped out with. The focus in the image is the HVAC system that's up on top. We were able to help identify some pretty significant rebates for that.
Yeah, that's great. And just another thing to highlight with, and you can stay on this slide that you scrolled to, but is that when we talk, Christina mentioned multifamily. A lot of multifamily housing is actually considered commercial. So when we kind of distinguish our services, it's, sometimes multifamily can be residential depending on what criteria it meets. But just to highlight that a lot of times the multifamily coaching we're providing, we consider that commercial coaching. For our clean transportation, which is, again, like our third pillar of our programs, we focus mainly on two areas. We have EV charging and infrastructure and then I'll talk about our active transportation. But for our EV programs, we provide EV charging infrastructure grant assistance. And this is just one example of the way GCE kind of leverages the services that CLEAR provides. So the recharge coaching program is actually a 14-county region in Northwest Colorado and, and CLEAR houses that position and it's funded through a contract with the state. But having, we, we provide services to Garfield County through that, that role. And that means that if an entity wants to install an EV charging station, we help connect them with grants to get that station installed. We also, just this year, finished a countywide EV readiness plan. And we also support Charge Ahead Colorado and EV fast charging plazas. So a lot of counties or communities that are on the I-70 or Highway 82 corridor, we want to make your community a spot for people to stop and charge their EVs. So we help get grants for that as well. We also host EV ride and drives, you can see a couple pictures of those there. That'll entail a dealership, dealerships bring their EVs and folk can, folks can test drive them. I've gotten to do that at an event and it was really, it was fun to drive the EV. And also typically enthusiastic vehicle owners will also bring their vehicles to those events and talk about them. And we do typically try to host workshops in Spanish. And then for our clean transportation, like active transportation programs, this year we gave, we provided 50 e-bikes to Garfield County residents. And those were, I use the word provided, not gave, because they had to pay $150 for a roughly $2,000 in value e-bike if they were income qualified, so 80% area median income and below. And we provided a number of those bikes to Silt residents. You can see a couple pictures of our, our training that we hosted because we wanted to make sure that everyone who received a bike knew how to use it, knew about all their equipment. And then the picture in the middle is their bike recipient. And then we also had over 50 attendees. We hosted a bike there event as part of Bike to Work Day on June 26th. And we did that at all of the Garfield County Libraries branch locations across the county. And actually, Silt had the most attendees across the county. And we think part of that was that we had it at, the event at the library and a, another event for kids got out around the time when our event started. And so they all came over and we had pizza and it was really fun. So that's another fun program that we did this year. We also do a lot of events and outreach, so we, we can't go to every town festival, but we did go to Silt Haydays in, in 2023 last year. And this is a picture of our table, we went to Earth Day in Newcastle this year. We're also currently in process, you maybe have seen some of our emails from our Winter Wise Energy Efficiency Campaign that is offering a discounted home energy assessment and a $500 gift card to Lowe's if you participate. We also do about a monthly GCE newsletter that, again, some of you may be on the list for that and you've seen those articles that we send out. And we also just hosted a lodging and hospitality workshop last Thursday that was really well attended. And Christina talked about benchmarking for large buildings. That was a big focus of, of that was for our hotels that meet the benchmarking thresholds and we can support them through that. For what's ahead in 2025, we're gonna continue to grow and build our residential and commercial energy programs. Those are, those are already really robust, but we want to continue to expand them, making sure that the community knows about the services and are taking advantage of those. We will focus on the implementation of that EV readiness plan and all of its strategies. We also want to optimize state and federal resources. So as we are continuing to try to grow the GCE budget, we also know that with the Inflation Reduction Act and the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill, there's a lot of federal money flowing for these home energy efficiency and a lot of other clean energy works. So we're trying to make sure we get those resources in our community. Christina's gonna continue to offer advanced energy management coaching and really try to expand the coaching component of that and working with our facility managers. We'll continue to support renewable energy projects. Some of that is, like we were talking about solar, there's a lot of our GCE members that have power purchase agreements for their solar and that is one thing that we do is, is make sure that they understand who their PPA is with and how it's working. And then again, continuing to work on economic and workforce development. And this slide is where we'd like to hear from you. So each GCE board member, because again, the members are really the jurisdictions, but we have a designated representative from each jurisdiction on the board. And that currently is Mayor Reichel. But we wanted to revisit this question with you of if there is, I know Mayor Reichel's not here, but if anyone on the Board of Trustees is interested in joining and, and if we want to have that conversation. There, we, we also like to have an alternate, it can be really beneficial. The meetings are typically bimonthly, so every other month, they're often in Glenwood Springs. Sometimes we come down to Rifle for meetings. And we love in-person participation, but a virtual option is available. So interested in any input from you, you don't have to decide tonight either, but if there's a conversation that the board would like to have to consider who might be the, the best appointee? Because I don't know if we've revisited that topic in a while.
How long do the meetings last and what times of day are they usually scheduled?
Yeah, great question. They are typically Friday afternoons from 1 to 3 on the second Friday of odd numbered months. So we would have one coming up. We might actually be rescheduling our November 8th meeting, potentially to the following Friday, but that's typically when it is.
I would be interested, either as a representative or as an alternate.
Great.
Should we just nominate Mayor Reichel in absentia? Would he appreciate that?
He's not here to defend himself.
Or reaffirm his commitment?
We'll see what he says when the next time he's, I mean, I could just be the alternate too.
She could be the, she could be the, the-
Is, is that sufficient? Can we have them fight about it internally and they'll let you know?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, we, if, like I said, subsequent discussion is fine, but we would, you know, again, having two folks who are able to attend and we often have alternates who participate almost just as much as the, the rep, depending on what schedules are like, but that'd be great.
No, no fighting or anything, we'll, we have an abundance of interest.
Wonderful.
Discuss passionately.
Sounds great.
I think you'd be great on that, just saying it out loud. I think you'd be a great fit for it because of your background and-
I think it's an interesting topic or, you know, it's a compelling topic.
Cool.
Any other related questions?
Yeah, any other questions for us?
I have a couple, but Chris?
No, I just, and you guys requesting 3600?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. We are requesting 3,600, 3,600 to be included in the Town of Silt's 2025 budget. And so I will advocate that we heard of, of $11,000 being spent on Town of Silt residents this year for Re-Energize and multiple thousands of dollars in, in bikes and also saving on your energy bills. So, you know, we're glad to be able to provide this, these resources to the Town of Silt.
Talk to me about how we can grow people's awareness in the Town of Silt about your program. The, the number 20 homes qualified to date seems like a small number to me, based on our population and what other communities have in their populations. It seems like, and I'm guessing, I'm not saying, I'm suggesting, the issue is that people- the issue is that people don't know you exist. They're not aware of what services you offer or how they can benefit them. So I guess maybe that's a question for Nicole or Jim as well. What are we doing to help get the word out? And are there any improvements we can make to that?
We, well.
Go ahead.
We did meet with Jim and talked about some different options to increase awareness by you have a newsletter that we could include information for ReEnergize in. We also talked about using the sign outside Town Hall. So we're, we're thinking of some different strategies to continue to grow that. I think continuing to attend events, Silt Haydays is a great time to meet people where they're at. And we would, we're welcoming, we welcome any new ideas for how to engage folks, but.
Nicole, what about the other summer events? Well, with the massive increase in attendance, you know, some of our concert series had 800 to 1,000 people.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, it did. And we have vendors that set up, even if it's just informational.
Okay.
We have vendors that set up at all of our events that would put you in the depth of the community.
Yeah, okay, great.
And I'll add too that the 24 ReEnergize was was just for that program. Morgan mentioned CARE and WAP that are the federal and state programs. So we do take applications through that and we don't keep track of the numbers. We probably should do a little more. But I know that we divert a lot of folks through ReEnergize to that program. So it's fortunately, it's not just 20, but that's.
And we're, we're thinking about that question broadly across the county and ways that we can continue to grow engagement. And again, ReEnergize almost always is full and we run out of money, which again is a good problem to have. We want people to be using that service. But we're continually thinking of new strategies. The Winter Wise Energy Campaign has been putting a lot of attention in in the media and and social media. We do boosted posts. So we're definitely thinking about all strategies.
I think about it from a personal standpoint, having someone who's a pro come out and say, do this, do that, here's what it'll cost, not to get it subsidized, but just because I don't have the time to learn it and know it myself, to have a pro come out and have someone who's recommended by this group would be beneficial. Right? Because I'm going to trust them by default.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
But it's, it's an awareness challenge, not not a utilization challenge.
I agree. And that, do we link our utility service or information on our website? Like, I mean, maybe that's something where we could put a little blurb about them on our website. You know, for our residents who pay the, or they're paying utility bills here, that's relevant to the, or, you know, people living in, maybe another idea.
Yeah, if you can get me any flyers, we can get it advertised through our outlets also.
Log content, linking through social media, hey, winter's coming up. Have you checked these four things in your house? And we link to it or republish it.
Yeah.
Just thinking about ways of organic growth.
Wonderful. We love all those suggestions. Yeah, we'll follow up with you.
Thanks. I still have a waiting list, but.
Yeah, but if the waiting list reaches a certain threshold and they get enough money in grants, they grow their team and they can get more done, like that sort of.
We, we welcome, you know, we want anyone to apply. And again, we get, we will get to the waitlist next year. We've, we fully anticipate, so. And we're, we're always, like I said, applying for more grants. And there's, there's a lot of money flowing from the, from the federal government right now for this work. So we're always capitalizing that on that. Cool.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much for joining us this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you, welcome.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Colorado River Valley Economic Development Partnership, featuring Leisha Gressley. I guess, I guess I'm turning this over.
We seem to be at the same meetings all the time, which is great. Yeah. Thank you.
Different side of the table.
Yes, yes. I appreciate you having me here tonight. Mayor Protem Hanahan, welcome. I guess I'm on the opposite side this time. I'm here with the Colorado River Valley Economic Development Partnership. We still haven't shortened our name, so I apologize for that. But it's been about a year since I was last here in front of you and I'm just here tonight to firstly say thank you for your contribution over the last year. Every bit helped and it really got us to through the the part of just getting started and helping us get established. I understand you went through one of your budget presentations tonight with Town Manager Mr. Mann here, who I have to say, thank you for selecting him because he has been a huge help. I think a lot of, it's like a startup business. The funds aren't necessarily the only thing that people contribute. It's the time and expertise and that's been invaluable from Jim, so I really appreciate that. He's given me a lot of good contacts and and counsel, so that's invaluable. But I believe that he has put in 5,000 into the budget for 2025 for our organization. So thank you for your continued support as you consider your budget for next year. So second of all, I really like your timer idea on that. We went through, I think we had three presentations at Rifle Council a couple of weeks ago and it was, it was kind of a long night, so I might have to make that suggestion too. Leap some bounds ahead here.
You can change the music too, you know.
I, I have heard, just make it relevant to the presentation. We'll see, put that to the test.
Still made me feel like it was the Hunger Games and somebody just died.
So I, I don't have a presentation tonight mainly because of that reason. I know you have a lot on your plate. And I, over this year, I created this vision board based on our strategic plan that we did develop this year. I know that, oh, perfect, yeah. And I actually.
A little hard to see on the screen.
Yeah, it, well, I'm, I'm a, I'm a digital person. I don't like to get things printed out. One, it saves money and two, I just end up with a pile of pages on my dining room table. But I actually came up with this, talk about ways to promote what we're all doing. Our relationship and what we're doing with CLEAR and Garfield Clean Energy is an example of how we're all connecting and working together. I, I put this together for the CLEAR's Energy Summit that was in Aspen in August that we were asked to be on a panel for. So they said, you've got this tiny little space that you can put some information out. So I thought this was the best way to at least give an indication of where we're at. In March, we participated in the Community Builders Building Better Places Program. And Cole Berger, who is your business representative for Silt with Reslendae, he attended that. I think we're in the transition of managers, so we didn't actually, we weren't able to have a a member there from the local government. But from that, we were able to establish a little bit of who we were and what direction we wanted to go. And we completed our strategic plan in June up at Lakota, which was a nice kind of afternoon just to to get people out and about. And this is the result, we, we have some goals. We have our values, which is highlighted in the images there. But to me, this vision board gives an idea of where we want to go, at least through 2026 and and some of the ideas we're working on. So that was a huge accomplishment. We created a vision statement, a mission statement, which I know you all know that's not the easiest thing to do to all have consensus, but you got to start somewhere. So having that allowed us to come up with what we're actually focused on and define our lane. And that has been this year, defining our lane, who we want to be and and what we want to represent. And I think what came out of it the most was, we're not here to create new. Things are already happening with great programs. We're not here to tell people what to do either. We want to create, we want to keep our small communities and our history and our culture. But what we found was the missing part or the or the gap was the connection between all these things going on. How do you get these energy efficient programs out to the people who need them? It is awareness, it is understanding who you need to talk to. And I think that's one of the main goals of what the EDP or the partnership can be at this time is being like the switchboard operator. When calls come in from, from one person, they have a need to connect with another, we're the ones to make that connection. And I feel like we've been quite successful in that already this year. An example, and just because they're here and it's just top of mind, but we connected Morgan and the GCE crew with the Lift Up Warehouse in Glenwood. And you might think, oh, that's Glenwood, but it's not. Lift Up actually provides food services for parachute through to Aspen and serves a lot of our region. And they've just purchased this new warehouse. And they're looking for ways to save money and find efficiencies. And we were able to connect them to do what they need to do, not for us to tell them what they need to do, but find ways to utilize the programs and and connect with each other. So that's just one example of some things that have happened this year. Other areas your money's gone to is we're building our website. That we, we had a website that Evan with the Hearst Initiative was running and then put together for us, which was a great placeholder. But one of our goals is to really be the hub for trustworthy and reliable information. As we all know, right now, there's a lot of information out there, a lot of opinions and a lot of misinformation. How can we be a center for people to come to, to your point, Mayor Protem? How do people know who to trust or who to recommend? We want to be that place that people can go to and say, oh, how, how should I find this or who should I go through? Let me go to the partnership website and ask them or see if there's information on there because it's trustworthy and reliable. So that's another aspect and the website is in the works and it should be launched hopefully by the end of this year. Another great win we had this year was we actually became the sponsoring entity for the Rural Jump Start Program with the Office, OEDIT, the Office of Economic Development International Trade through the state. So not to get too in the weeds on it, but it is a tax incentive program through the state for new businesses in distressed or recognizes distressed areas within rural Colorado. Our area up to, so Parachute, Rifle, Silt, Newcastle, were always in that distressed or rural jump start zone. But they didn't have a sponsoring entity and that's somebody or an organization that can act as the guarantee or the connector, the information. How do you find out information on this? Go through the criteria, the filter for it and connect them with the Rural Jump Start Department. So we took that on, we went through the whole process, applied for it and got accepted. And we also, Glenwood Springs was not in it. Carbon Down Glenwood are not part of it based on you have to meet certain criteria to be in that, in that distressed community. So Glenwood just recently got accepted into it and they asked if we, even though we're not technically in that, in our region of what we're working on, would we take them under our wing? And we put it to our board and and yes was the, of course, the answer because we're not here just to take what we need for us. We're here to support and show that we're playing nice in the sandbox. We want everybody to thrive. How do we help each other? And I'm happy to say that happened. We got approved September 19th and we already have our first applicant in, working with them. So it's happening, stuff is happening, we have momentum. And finally, I think the other really, really big win is, I, I don't want to be coming here. My goal is not to be coming here every year asking you all for funding. The goal is to use that to get started and and to get going, but it, it shouldn't be on the municipalities to keep this going. We want to find other revenue streams and ways to diversify our revenue as well as our economy. And a win that we had this year, I applied with the help of AGNC, who's one of our great partners as well. We applied for a grant with the Colorado Energy Office and we won. It's a bit of a golden goose of grants, I like to say. It is 80,000 a year for three years, no match, and it's for staffing capacity. So that is a huge win for us and it gives us a little bit of breathing room in order to do some things that we want to do and and just focus on the goals of of the organization rather than keep coming back and trying to fundraise all the time, which is a challenge for everyone. We want to get stuff done, not, not keep having to ask for money to get it done. So that is implemented in 2025. And our first project with that will be identifying Western Garfield County specific data around alternative energy options, economic opportunities, labor, workforce, reduction in greenhouse gases. We'll be working with, with Garfield Clean Energy a lot on this as well. But that will be headed up by Dr. Nathan Perry, who's the economics professor at CMU in Grand Junction. So there's, there's a lot of wheels turning and stuff happening. But part of the challenge we have in our region is the data doesn't go down as far to our municipalities or it's just not collected. There's so much more that could be analyzed and collected for us specifically, especially as we're been, we've been heavily reliant on an oil and gas industry that is so volatile. So this data will help us, first of all, recognize what our options are, build asset maps for our region and also give us an indication of where we can find opportunities that fit our communities in the future. So that's just been the last year. A lot more to go in in 2025, I think. And we have our Q4 meeting tomorrow and our goal is to support what's here. How do we help existing businesses thrive? And then how do we identify what is going to fit our area and our region from a manufacturing or energy, alternative energy standpoint and and find options to complement what we have, not necessarily to replace? So I'm going to leave it at that because it's a lot. But I would love to answer any questions because this is meant to be a collaboration and a conversation and.
Questions, comments?
I don't have anything. Yeah, then there's a lot of information to digest. Thank you for that.
Yes.
I have a few. There seems to be some overlap with the chamber. Are you talking with them, working with them? How are those efforts being coordinated?
Yeah, that's a really great question because we ask that all the time. I think part of what, the chamber is actually based in the Rifle CoWork now. They did make that switch in, I think they, they'd done that before. I met with you last year. They're defining their lane and their relevancy and we're here to support them in that. We're not necessarily offering the workshops or they're membership driven as well. But I work very closely with their staff as well as their board. We attend their meetings every month just to give updates. How can we coincide? And I've actually sent them probably up to 10 referrals from businesses I've talked to and mentioned what they're doing. So we're here to support them, not to compete with them. And they're offering what they're doing, they're more boots on the ground. I would look at us as kind of more of a 30,000 foot view and how do we have programs and information that supports the region? And they're there to serve the business community and their members and provide, from my understanding of seeing what direction they're going, provide tools for businesses to be successful. So there's oftentimes, I don't know if Larry's been to see you yet, but he might have come last time. But they, he might be coming up next then. We're all in this roadshow together, I tell you. They recently got selected with the Roaring Fog Leadership. It's a program they have to identify a community issue and how to provide insight to and and support to get them over the hump. I actually, our group recommended them and and gave them the information with, from Roaring Fog Leadership to the Chamber to say, hey, mate, this may be a program that could work for you. So that's just some examples. We're not here to, again, duplicate or take over. We're here to be a support and connect the dots.
Great. And no other questions? Okay. Thank you very much for joining us and sharing all this information.
You can reach me, my contact details are on there, but we do have our own email. And look, I have a minute 25. I don't know, maybe we need to use.
Feel free to change your meeting times. Do not be three hours long in the middle of the day.
It's a, it's a really good, good question, but.
I'd love to attend.
When can we do them?
11 to 2, I'm like, really?
Well, it's 10 to 1, 10 to 12:30, I try, and they're only quarterly. But maybe we can get you on a committee that could, we could change up, up the dates. Okay.
What? I'm sorry.
Let's get Derek on a committee because I completely, I think it's, it's.
He'll design your website for you.
Oh, really? No, we do appreciate the support. And again, any insight you have or ideas, that's, that's how we get stuff done, I think. It doesn't just happen by looking things up. It usually comes from somebody with an idea of, oh, hey, you should talk to this person. And then we end up, I had a call with Union Pacific today and we all know how hard it is to talk with the railroad and it happened, so.
Were you just buying a ticket?
No, I, it was actually about their Economic Development Industrial Development Manager who wants to work more closely with economic development organizations. And so, and these things just continue to happen. And it's more about, as you mentioned before, building awareness. When people know who we are and we're out here to serve, they start bringing us more connections and and resources. There we go.
There are lots of businesses on the front range. I have friends who work at them or or run them and they'd love to move out here for quality of life. But again, it's, it's the means, it's the how. How do, how do I relocate my business? How do I stay connected to my staff? How do I continue to run it effectively, successfully and make a profit?
And that's, we're here to serve as that entity and that hub to at least get started and connect with the right people, organizations, resources.
Sounds good. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the. All right. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 37, Series 2024, a resolution approving the renewal of a special use permit for the Consciously Crafted LLC retail marijuana store on a property known as Section 10 Township 6, Range 92 subdivision, original town site, so block 20, lot repla, I'm not going to read all that.
You're almost there.
I will turn the rest of that description over to Director Santino.
So first, I'd like to welcome Mr. Damavanti. Did I say that right?
Yeah, you did.
Okay. He is the new owner of, he's the owner of Consciously Crafted, who just purchased Haikyuu. So since I'm also on a timer, I'm going to try to shorten this up the best that I can. Consciously Crafted LLC bought the retail marijuana business that is operating out of 730 Main Street. This was formerly known as Haikyuu, and they've been operating under a special use permit. Haikyuu's special use permit required a renewal every two years. The last renewal was in 2020, when we had certain staff that, that no longer is with the town. When they left, some of this knowledge of renewals left with them. So now that Consciously Crafted had brought a couple of things to the town's attention, the special use permit renewal was one of them. And so they are working diligently to make sure that they get caught back up and that they are in compliance with their special use. They're hoping to just extend and renew the previous special use that had been approved. They are in a B1 zone district. There's commercial mixed use around them. They have submitted an operating plan that is outlined on Page 2 of the staff report. Nothing that necessarily deviates from what Haikyuu was doing. If anything, they have more safety precautions put into place. They are in the downtown district for the Silk Comprehensive Plan, and overall, it aligns with the retail that is wanted in the comprehensive plan and the Western theme. It does specify in the comprehensive plan that the town should scrutinize marijuana applications in this area, which I'm assuming took place at the time of the original special use permit because there has been a retail marijuana store operating out of that location for 10 years now. The original special use was in 2014. I did add the comprehensive plan page for the downtown area in the staff report as well. And then, as I said before, they're in a B1 zone district. That requires a special use for any retail marijuana, which is why they, they're going through the special use permit process again. Overall, staff finds that the applicant's proposal is acceptable with minimal negative impact to adjacent properties. We have not received any negative feedback over the marijuana store that's been operating there for 10 years, and we don't foresee that there's going to be any additional issues that come up with the change of ownership. The largest concern is the mixed-use occupancy that was taking place in an unsprinkled building with inadequate fire separation. It was brought to the town's attention by Consciously Crafted that there was a back area, a back living area to the building, that when previous marijuana inspections were being completed, was unknown to town staff. And they have the front portion of the building, and then in the rear of the building, there's actually three bedrooms, a kitchen, a bathroom, that people were living in. And so that has been brought into compliance with vacating everybody that was living there because it doesn't meet the adequate fire separation or sprinkled building requirements for a mixed-use building. So that has since been turned into storage and a break room for staff, but it is still locked, even though it's not a licensed area. They're not going to have any product back there. It'll be of use just for their staff, and it will not be used as a living quarter. So nobody can sleep there. We, it's been very clear, and they've been, they've been really great with working with us to try to figure out what exactly that needs to look like to come into compliance. Overall, staff recommends approval of the special use permit with the following conditions: that all representations made in the application or during meetings is binding to the applicant; that the applicant provide any additional requested documents and pay all related fees; that the applicant uses the property and structure for the purpose of the marijuana business with the acknowledgement that the building is not approved to be used as a residence. Nobody is allowed to live or sleep at the property; that this approval is not for construction; that any approved, any additional improvements made need to be permitted; that the applicant comply with local, state, and federal marijuana laws; and that they renew their business license and marijuana license annually. And then their special use permit would stay every two years. So every even year, they would reapply for their special use. And that way we could revisit if there ever did become an issue, if the special use permit is adequate to continue on. I also added a recommended motion and a resolution, and I will let Mr. Damavanti fill in any gaps that he thinks that I missed, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Nicole. I think you said everything perfectly. So if you guys have any questions or anything, that'd be great.
Questions?
I don't, I mean, it seems straightforward. I mean, there's really no change other than ownership. Everything else stays the same, and there haven't been any issues, I mean, with, with the past one, or, well, other than them living there.
Other, yeah, other than that, yeah.
Business-wise, there haven't been any issues, so.
Do you have any plans for signage changes on the building, over the building? What are those?
So our company is called Verde Natural, so we, we just have a plan to change the signage from Haikyuu to Verde Natural. The look and feel of it would be exactly the same. It would just be the wording that would be different. So we put an application in with the state. So once that gets approved, then we'll work with, with you guys on getting that in motion. But nothing would change visually. It would just be the wording.
Okay. That was why I asked. I appreciate that the signage there before was discreet, for lack of a better term. And it would be nice to have that, but, you know, not turn it into some of the ones you see off the sides of the highway with blinking red arrows and more obnoxious.
Have you seen that building that's bright red?
I think we've got our quota on that.
So no, no bright LED lights?
Yeah, again, in keeping with the culture of the community of, so I have no problems with you trying to do your business and whatnot, but I like the idea of keeping the signage discreet.
And that would go through sign permit in P and Z, correct?
It would go through a sign permit. If it deviated from what's allowed in the sign code, then it would go in front of P and Z.
Okay, gotcha.
It would be an exception.
I've got a question. Maybe it's for Sheila. I'm assuming, at the time of the transfer, is Haikyuu up to date on their sales tax? Because I'm assuming it would start over again with the new owners, right? It would start...
Yeah, I think that would be an Amy question.
Amy question?
And it's up, my understanding that Laurie did check with Amy, and their taxes are, everything is up to date, and they haven't had any violations when they went through the recent renewal.
Okay.
Those are my main concerns, up to date on everything and in compliance with everything.
Yep, just continue to run a compliant business like there's been there for the last 10 years, and everything should be good.
I mean, I'm ready if you're...
Well, this is a public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Item.
You're not ready.
But I'm trying to find the words. All right. The time is now 8:03 PM, and I will open this agenda item up for public comments. Persons desiring to make public comment on this item, please activate the raise hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, do we have any phone calls or messages?
No, I did not hear from anyone.
Do we have any raised hands, Amy?
We do not have any raised hands.
No one in chambers to make a comment? The time is now 8:04 PM, and I will close the public hearing and open it up to further board comment or motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Unless you want to.
No, you do it.
I was going to say, Mr. Mayor Protem, I move to approve, yeah, thanks, Nicole. I move to approve the Resolution 37, Series 2024, an application for a special use permit allowing Consciously Crafted to operate an establishment for retail marijuana at 730 Main Street with the conditions written in the staff report and spoken during this meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion made by Trustee Clausen and seconded by Trustee Engelhardt. All those in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Hi. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the September 2024 financial report. Now we'll turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you. I was trying to start my video. Didn't want to. This is for the month of September. 75% of the year has elapsed. We are doing relatively well on staying within the expenditures that you guys appropriated last year for this year. We are $1.174 million in sales tax, which is about 84% of where we thought, what we thought we were going to get. Our use, our use tax is at 420, which is 105% of what we anticipated receiving. Trash is pretty much in line. Wastewater is in line. Irrigation is in line. We are, again, still way ahead on our water service fees than we had anticipated. We're doing well with revenues for most of the, the funds, of course, the general fund and the water, wastewater fund are lower because of capital projects that haven't been completed, which are going to be pushed to next year and rolled over in that capital budget. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Do we know what percentage of the sales tax is from online shopping? Can we...
Unfortunately, it does not. I mean, like, I can kind of give you an idea. Well, I can bring you an idea at the next meeting with, you know, like Amazon, eBay, things like that. But the information that they give us does not differentiate whether it's online or brick and mortar, because they'll have an asterisk that tells you that it's brick and mortar. It just means it's brick and mortar somewhere. It doesn't mean that it's brick and mortar in town. So it'll have an asterisk, an asterisk next to Amazon because there are facilities, sorting facilities, and warehouses in Colorado. But there isn't anything in silt, if that makes sense.
Unfortunately, the information that the Department of Revenue provides us does not give us a lot of clarity on that matter. We would like to have that information as well because it would help us be able to do the cost-benefit analysis of new residences. And we're lacking kind of that data to really show.
Okay. You don't have to spend time on that.
Well, I mean, I've contacted the state and said, is there a way? And he's like, well, that's what that is. And I said, but we don't have an Amazon.
Yeah.
And so he clarified that it was, as long as there was a brick and mortar somewhere in the state, they were considered brick and mortar and not online. So if you ordered from a boutique in Denver, it would show brick and mortar on my spreadsheet, even though it was shipped into you.
Okay, yes. Yeah, just with sales tax is seeing a little bit of an increase past years and coming up into the holiday season. Just reminding our citizens to go out, shop online. If it's shipped here to the zip code...
As long as it's shipped here.
Then...
Yes.
The town accounts for it. So it's always a good reminder to put it out there.
Yeah, we are 1% ahead of where we were last year for sales tax, but higher than what we had anticipated being overall at this time of year.
Right.
Any other questions or comments for Treasurer Tucker?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Treasurer Tucker.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, manager and staff comments. I'll turn this over to Manager Man.
The only thing additional that I'll mention that wasn't in my report is that on November 2nd, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, there is a first-time homebuyer education class put on by Chaffa in Glenwood Springs at the Garfield County Library. So if anybody is interested, they should attend because there are some pretty good first-time homebuyer programs out there that can reduce your down payment requirement.
How are we getting the word out?
Good question. We'll get this on our weekly newsletter.
But the event is when?
It's Saturday. And maybe, maybe Nicole can post this on Facebook, because I love social media.
And I assume the economic development, that, that one is kept intentionally ambiguous?
Yes.
Well, then we definitely look forward to hearing more.
Well, it would be nice to bring 65 jobs to the community.
Absolutely.
Stay tuned.
Any other staff comments?
Nicole, I guess, are we getting a new trick-or-treating again?
Yes.
Need help?
Yes.
I'll do it again. That's fun. I can join it. I was seeing all them kids, so I'll be down there.
That's great. That would be perfect.
I'll be there as well, Nicole.
Oh, I can definitely put you to work.
That's fun. I enjoy seeing all them kids. I know a lot of those people, you know, being here. It's just fun.
We didn't do a set pass.
As myself. As an old guy that needs surgery in knees and hips and world, watching the old guy become his skeleton. That's about what I feel like, so.
There's a Fall Fest and the Halloween thing happening at the same time on Halloween, right?
Yeah. I separated out the names back in 2020 when I was trying to figure out things to do that were outdoors that I could still help people congregate for.
Yeah.
And not everybody celebrates Halloween. So we advertise it as two separate things so that if somebody doesn't want to celebrate Halloween, they can still come do like fall activities and not necessarily partake in the Halloween event. So the Main Street Trick or Treat is on Main Street, and we close the road. And then Fall Fest is down Seventh Street that we also close, and that's where kids can paint pumpkins, and we'll have a photo op, and they can stuff scarecrows. And then we have other crafts that they can do, and then we'll have a hayride going.
Oh, Merson's going to do the hayride again?
Yeah, we, our gentleman that we used for the horse-drawn carriage rides moved. And so we found somebody for the tree lighting, but we were not able to find a horse-drawn carriage ride for the hayride. So we're just gonna do a trailer hayride.
Oh, okay.
And then somebody, one of Joe's very small skeleton crew is gonna, is gonna help.
That's what I was wearing, because I thought they had moved, so I wasn't sure who was the game. That'll work.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll do that. And then, yeah, anybody that wants to come help, we would appreciate any help. And then with the tree lighting as well, on November 26th, we are looking for one of the trustees to do the countdown. Santa's a little shy this year, so we, he would prefer not to be the one doing the countdown. He has a lot of packages to deliver, so.
I'll do it.
Perfect. Well, that was an easy sell. That's great.
He likes numbers.
Awesome.
Easy sell.
Just like Count Dracula. Yeah, so that'll be perfect. Awesome.
And that's on the November 26th?
Yep, Tuesday, November 26th.
Any other questions for staff?
Good.
All right.
I have a question for staff.
Please.
You may not know the answer to this, but, you know, I was thinking about, you know, we've had discussion about trails and stuff like that. Iron Horse Mesa, obviously it's far from being fully developed, but there is, on the west side, there's like a retention pond and everything. And, you know, one time, there is some irrigation there. Is, is any of that dedicated to the town, and is that...
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Once it's developed, it will... Once it's developed, it will be. Because that whole second phase on that west side was supposed to, that's part of their parkland dedication.
Okay, I just didn't know if that was already dedicated and that could be utilized as trails, but not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, once it's developed, or if they come back and, and we kind of hit the drawing board again because it is so outdated, we'll see what they propose and see if, if that's going to suffice as a parkland dedication.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. And the only other, other question I had was for Public Works. Now that, that home avenue is redone and everything, that ballabout kind of sticks out, you know, on First Street? Is there any way, maybe?
Slows everybody down, doesn't it?
Yeah, exactly. But, but at night, it's difficult to see. I didn't know if there's any, any way we could get a street light out there someday, or.
Talk to it, so.
Yeah, it was just a thought because, yes, it, it does, it works because it slows people down. But at night, it's real hard to see, and I just didn't want somebody to.
Bounce over it.
Exactly. That's all I had.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is updates from the board and board comments. We'll start with Trustee Poston.
All right, so thank you so much for all the work that you're doing with the budget for us. It'll be interesting to just dive into it and have some deeper discussions coming up. But we know it's, it goes a lot of energy into it, so thank you for that. And I look forward to more discussions next, next meeting.
Trustee Engelhardt?
We're looking forward to attending the Halloween festivities. I think it's maybe the only, all the other towns seem to be doing it on, not on Halloween. So we're actually doing it on the day of, which I think is really good. So looking forward to it.
Trustee Brendon?
Just reminding everybody, time change coming up and all that stuff, getting dark earlier and earlier. Be real careful because kids will be out, people out doing stuff when it will be dark, so it's harder to see them. Also, thank Public Works and stuff again, I know I've said in the past, the horse shoe pits up there, we've gotten quite, I think they're getting more and more use. Every Sunday, there's a tournament up there, and then there's a lot of times people getting together as well. So look forward to just seeing that continue. It's a great place for everybody to come together and do some stuff and kind of ties it with the skate park and the stuff up there.
Trustee Clausen?
I don't have much tonight, other than, you know, I just wanted to thank the staff for, for all the hard work that they do, and especially Public Works, because they were out, you know, late last night. And, you know, they've had a couple of water breaks and, you know, so I just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work.
Trustee Seaver?
I see we got the third crossing light up now. Is there any more coming?
Yes, we're still waiting for the post by the liquor store.
Which one?
By the liquor store.
Oh, yeah, 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 you're right, you're right.
And once Seadog gets that in, then we can have all four crosswalks.
How did the, the fall cleanup go?
It went well. We went through six dumpsters.
So it's worth, I mean, I'm just curious to make sure it's worth doing, I guess, you know.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, thank you. And that's all I had.
Are the speed limit signs up on the, the bridge? Didn't they, didn't we take down the 15s? We were going to put up 25s, or is that?
Yes, we were, they said to take them down, police officers, and they didn't really say to put them back up.
All streets in the town are 25 miles an hour and less posted.
I see. Okay. The only other thing I had is I will volunteer for the trick-or-treat stuff. And if there's a costume contest, I'm going to win it.
Truly noted.
So if you want to see how, you should show up. Last item, in case some.
Throw him down the gauntlet.
I'm just saying. I'd said it to the detective, former detective privately, I'll say it publicly. I'll be there. I will win the costume tent contest, so just don't bother. You may or may not be aware, there's an election coming up. Just get out and vote. I don't care who you vote for, I care that you participate. Democracy is participatory. I encourage everyone who's eligible to vote. That's it for me. Next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Begging. Motion by Trustee Seaver to adjourn, seconded by Trustee Brendon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good night, everyone.